All right, meeting is called to order at eight ten, yes. Please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is very loud. If we must evacuate this room because of an emergency, there are two exits that may be used, both have a sign above the door. One exit is to the left and the other is directly behind us. Directly behind us? It's like platform nine and three quarters, I guess you just run at the wall. I would like to compliment the principal and staff on the excellent condition of the school and I want to thank the PTA for the refreshments during the exact session. They were very delicious.
The Italian cookies were delicious. Italian cookies.
Yes. Mrs. Reed really appreciated the Italian. There's still, oh, you didn't bring them. I thought you might have brought them. Okay. I do, and just an aside for those who are celebrating, Happy Hanukkah, second night of Hanukkah. Ms. Acevedo, I adjusted your menorah as we came down, I turned the second light, so. I messed with your day, I'm sorry. I'll fix it on the way out then, I'm sorry, I was being proactive. All right. Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on November eighth and November thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
And by Mrs. Colts. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Education acknowledges the receipt of the treasurer's report for the month of October two thousand seventeen, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to turn the meeting over to Superintendent Kent.
So to, I'm going to actually turn this over to Mr. Randazzo, who is going to introduce the fire marshals report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Tammy. Good evening to the board, the public. We are here once again with our fire safety report, yearly report, which is a requirement from the New York State Education Department. It's a very serious and important report for us because if we do not follow the codes, we cannot open schools. So the inspection consists of walkthroughs of all our buildings, make sure that we are complying with all codes that are pertaining to fire safety in schools. In order to accomplish this and submit a report to the state, the district must use a code official certified for fire safety in schools. Once again, the district has utilized Bruce Bingham and Associates. This year, Robert Angersani, excuse me, Robert, assisted with the fire inspection report, and he's here to say a few words, so please welcome Robert.
Good evening, everybody. Like Russ said, the inspection was done on July sixth this year. Before I get to that, I'd like to apologize. Last month, I was supposed to be here at the meeting, just so happened, one of my schools upstate had a little fire, so I had to go up there and tend to it that day, so I do apologize for that. Inspections were done on July sixth, and as usual, I say this to all the schools we go to, Baldwin has to be up there as one of the top schools. Russ does a fantastic job, his staff, I know very well, does a fantastic job. Tricky part about doing it during the summer is that schools are being done, cleaned, any kind of projects you have being done, schools are kind of in a mess. The state does know that, the state actually on the forms for every school, I do put a code violation as furnishings in the hallway. If I don't send that in, they actually send inspectors down to find out why I didn't put that on the report. But as Russ and his staff do, everything's neat, everything's clean, everything's orderly, all the exits are kept clean, everything looks really good. Like I said, all the schools are in fantastic condition, you know, from you guys down to the principals, to the custodians, to any staff. Schools really are top-notch, and I use this school district as one of my examples when I go around the state. So you guys should really take a round of applause for yourself, the schools are in really good condition. Just so you know, next year, the inspections, I believe, start May fifteenth, and they run through the end of July. It's a tough time, I, we fight with the state every year, it's testing time. Last thing you want is me walking around schools during testing time. Sometimes the state gives a little leeway on it, what I do tell people is, and I've had the rush, all my inspections are like May fifteenth, everyone wants me May fifteenth because it's out of, and he told me this morning, you know, before, he wants me May fifteenth. So I work with Russ, we'll get them done, we'll get them done early, not interfere with any testing, I don't like doing it, you guys don't want me anywhere near the school at that time interrupting, you know, classes and stuff, so. With that, any questions, anything, anyone have anything for? No?
Questions? Any? Anybody? Something? One, two, three?
No, I just, I mean, I just want to say, you know, again, kudos to Russ and his staff, and this is, this has been, I mean, I've been coming to board meetings for ten years, and it's been this same report every year, so. So I think we're, I'm very happy for the rest of the board, and the administration are very happy with, to hear that.
Absolutely. Okay. Anybody else? All right, listen, happy holidays to everybody, enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Oh, all right, we'll have a conversation with Mr. Randazzo about that.
Second up, we have Dr. Stephanie Boulder and the High School Guidance Department, who are going to present on our guidance program.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here tonight to present the highlights of our guidance services. It's coming. And I want to thank most of the Guidance Department for being here this evening. So our first highlight, I know you have a copy of it, it's a little hard to see from my perspective, our three-year graduation rate trends, which has increased from June two thousand fifteen at ninety percent, then to two thousand sixteen went to ninety-two percent, and this June two thousand seventeen, we got up to ninety-five percent, a rate that we're very proud of, and additionally, in August, the combined rate was ninety-seven percent. So we're definitely moving in the right direction, and we are going to continue with that upward trend. We have put a lot of interventions in place and support so our students can continue to achieve the high graduation rate that we are so proud of. Another point of pride for Baldwin is our advanced regents and regent diploma trends. So we started in two thousand fifteen with a combined rate of eighty-seven percent, and you'll notice that the breakdown between advanced regents and regent diplomas were forty-three and forty-four percent respectively. Two thousand and sixteen, it jumped to eighty-eight percent with a breakdown of thirty-nine and forty-nine, and last year, for two thousand seventeen, we achieved a ninety-four percent of students receiving an advanced regent diploma and regent diploma combined, with a forty-eight percent of students receiving advanced regent diplomas and forty-six percent receiving the regent diploma. So that's another point of pride for our students. Next, I'd like to address AP exams. This past May, six hundred and seventeen students sat for, took, they wrote six hundred and seventeen AP exams. We had seventy-four point two percent students scoring a three, four, and five, which is considered by College Board as mastery. We are continuing our plans to increase AP enrollment, and I want to speak a little bit about last night, we had our first AP parent information night, we had a full house of ninth through eleventh grade parents and students, it was standing room only, and we were, we gave a presentation about the benefits of enrolling in AP courses and the rigor associated with these courses and how the benefits students receive from being in our courses and how it translates into college career and, college and career readiness. We will also be having an AP student fair in the Commons, where we're going to have students and counselors speaking to students during the lunch periods regarding all the courses we offer. We are increasing courses offered across our curriculum, and we are adopting the AP Capstone Diploma Program. So those are all exciting endeavors that we are continuing to increase our AP enrollment. The next slide reflects a breakdown of students taking each exam in the different subject areas, and you'll see there are certain areas where there's more representation, but as I stated, we're trying, we're infusing new courses and new programs in each of the discipline areas. So these conversations are ongoing, and we try to really reflect students' interests and strengths in placing them in these courses. Another point that we're very proud of is our AP Scholar Awards. There are different categories, starting with the AP Scholar, which is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams, then the AP Scholar with Honor, which is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point two five on all exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. AP Scholars with Distinction are granted to those students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of the exams. These are very difficult milestones to achieve, and our students do very well at it. Finally, the, a National AP Scholar is granted to students in the United States who receive an average score of at least four on all AP exams, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of the exams. So for the class of two thousand and seventeen, we had sixty-four AP Scholars, twenty-four AP Scholars with Honors, nineteen AP Scholars with Distinction, and one National AP Scholar. So that is something that we are very proud of our students, and it represents high achievement. Next, Baldwin High School postgraduate plans. We had ninety-three percent students attending a four- or two-year technical or trade school, and seven percent of students continuing into the armed forces or world of work. The class of two thousand seventeen is now, they are now the freshman class in colleges, and they are attending a wide array of highly selective colleges and universities, ranging from the Ivy League schools to specialized schools, honors colleges, which all take a lot of rigor to get into, and we're very proud of our graduates from last year. And you'll see that the list of schools is varied, music colleges, you know, we have students attending CUNY McCauley Honors College, which is right up there, it's very competitive to achieve admissions to. We have a number of Ivy League schools and highly selective schools, such as Duke University, Emory University, Howard University, we have conservatories that kids are attending for our talented students. So the list is exhaustive, we're very proud of this. Sophie Davis School of Biomedical Education of CUNY is a very highly specialized and selective school, where students have a terminal degree program, and they come out with the M.D. degree. As well as the competitive state colleges, which are getting more and more competitive. We have instituted an onsite admissions program, and for last year, these are the statistics, but this year, every year, we add more and more colleges, where the students come, and it's very nice to be in the guidance office during this time, because our students come dressed in suits and professional business attire, and they meet with an admissions representative, and they advocate for themselves, and they sit with the admissions representative, and they find out right then and there whether or not they're accepted, and sometimes if they're not, the admissions representative can counsel them as to what they need to do to finally gain admission to that institution, and they are actually given a financial aid package right then and there. So last year, we had Adelphi University, SUNY Farmingdale, CW Post, Malloy, Monroe, Nassau Community College, New York Institute of Technology, and St. John's University. And some of the scholarship monies were confidential, but we had a grand total last year of five hundred eighty-seven thousand and two hundred and sixty dollars given out to our students. So the Guidance Department is busy throughout the year. We start in August, and we go through the end of June. Some of our programs, which I know a lot of you have been at, are the freshman orientation that happens in August for the freshmen, parents and students, where the administrators speak to the parents, and then the guidance counselors talk to the freshmen about graduation requirements and how to be successful at the high school. We then have freshman and sophomore college night, where we have a panel of admissions officers from a wide array of institutions, from the Ivy League schools to state schools to two-year schools to specialized colleges, and we, they talk to our freshmen and sophomores about the habits of mind necessary to gear themselves to college admissions or to a specialized college. We then have junior college bound night, where we go over the college admissions process with a speaker, and then we have a variety of, two sessions of workshops that students and parents can attend, which range from the college athlete, the two-year school, the specialized school, the art school, so we're very proud of that program as well. Additionally, in September, we meet with our seniors again to go over their college application process, and at that same evening, we have the financial aid night. That was moved up because the deadlines for the FAFSA Forum, which is the free forum for financial, the federal forum for financial aid, is now due much earlier, so we combine those two evenings together. In April, we have a college and career fair during the day, so all of our students can be exposed to the various universities and different vocations that they might want to learn about. In January, the first week in January, we invite back our alumni for the college connection, and we have our, every single grade come down to the auditorium and listen to our recent graduate, graduates speak about what prepared them best for college, and how their transition has been, and what our students can do to be successful. We have our senior awards assembly, where we recognize our graduate, our graduating class for their various endeavors, whether it's improvement, community service, humanitarianism, and academic achievement. We have now added the AP Information Night, which we just had last night, and the elective and AP Fair. So our guidance office is of, I always call it the hub of the school. We're very busy, and we do a lot of different activities with students, but some of the services that we offer are child study team referrals, that's where counselors meet weekly with school psychologists, social workers, other school administrators, to discuss as a team, different students who might be facing different challenges, such as an emotional challenge, a social challenge, even a medical challenge, that might require some intervention, and it's almost like a think tank, where we discuss different options for these students. We do individual student scheduling, we see every single student to make sure that their academic program is suiting their needs. Post-high school planning, which includes college advisement or vocational advisement, counseling interventions, academic intervention services, progress monitoring, we are looking at all students' progress reports and report cards, and having meetings with parents, transitional services for some of our classified students who are going into the world of work, or just to help them navigate the college process, annual meetings for each student, case management where indicated, our counselors attend all their students' committee on special education meetings and annual meetings, new students that come to our school, we have articulation with the student, the family, we sometimes reach out to the former school to make sure we're placing them in the right classes, any kind of at-risk counseling if a student is experiencing any kind of difficulty, and we also coordinate services with outside agencies. And our department just put up some different quotes that we hope that our students live by, and some kind of mission statements that we go by, helping all students reach their dreams, it's never too late to be great, and some of them were quotes that they, that the counselors chose, or that they actually created themselves. Start by doing what's necessary, then do what's possible, and suddenly you're doing the impossible. Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection and insists they become the best they can be. Always focus on how far you've come, rather than how far you have left to go. Be who you are, say what you feel, because those who mind don't matter, and those who matter don't mind. And finally, I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel, and that's really to end with an inspiration, because we feel that we inspire students every day and make a difference in their lives.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just going to open it up at this point, if there are any board members who have any questions. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Boulder, very comprehensive. I have a couple of questions on what you presented, and then I have some other questions, but I won't take up all the time, because I know other people have questions at the table. Can you tell me how long has the, let me go back, the AP program? How does, I mean, in terms of the testing, the students are required to pay for the AP exams, correct?
Students are required to pay for the exams, but our district subsidizes it, so we support the price, we pay, the district pays half, and students pay half.
And are there any methods in which, like, if you have students who may have difficulty even coming up with the half?
Absolutely, there's speed waivers that are given through the College Board, so there's speed waivers for SEDs, and we would, they're both through the College Board, but any student that we know of that's in a situation where that may be difficulty, the program we do the practice group, when they register for their exam, there is an actual part of it where they have, where we have to verify that they need to be over, but we do that as well, absolutely.
Thank you. I also wanted to ask that, how long has the onsite interview college been placed?
That started, I want to say, two years ago was when that started, and it has just grown exponentially. We continue to try to get a variety of different colleges to come and speak with our students, because, to be honest, even if they're not going to attend the school, we feel that it's a very good exercise for them to go through a college interview, because not all, a lot of, most college admissions, we say, do not require an interview, and we felt it's an important step for them, plus, sometimes it gives them confidence, that now they know they've gotten in somewhere, and that propelled them to then apply to more schools, so I, it's really a very, I'm very confident that the program will continue to grow, and that it is helping our students currently.
I'm yielding, in case someone else wants to ask a question.
I have a couple of questions. You have a large number of events in which families and students can come in and learn about the programs. For those students, for those parents and families who either are not available to come in for whatever reason, what other kinds of outreach does the guidance office do to, to educate parents as to what opportunities there are for students?
Well, one thing I'm also very proud of, you know, the guidance faculty is, is that we do all kinds of outreach, so we, if we know that a student, you know, we do a lot of outreach to get the students and parents to come to events, but some parents do work in evenings, so we avail ourselves of all of these resources at different times, so we have meetings going on at all times. I'll meet with a parent if they can attend a certain meeting, something recently just happened with a parent that they couldn't attend, and I will sit with that parent and go through the whole PowerPoint or whatever, presentation, you know, if they need to be connected with college personnel, we'll take care of that, so we really try to avail ourselves at all times for any parent that can't attend. You know, if there's a language issue, I always try to get a translator, if it's not myself involved, we've had, we've had interpreters, bilingual interpreters for events, so we really try to be inclusive, and we want to get every parent on board, you know, and we're always willing to hear other suggestions from the community, or if people call us and tell us, you know, this is an issue, you know, sometimes we'll have a morning session, but, you know, we've looked at different ways to get parents involved.
I, I know that the, or I suspect that the role of the guidance counselor has grown, and, you know, I'm just guessing that from spending a great deal of your time on scheduling now, there are many more responsibilities. What kinds of professional development, what kinds of opportunities do the guidance counselors have to, and I'll tell you why I'm asking, I was just at a program run by the STEM Hub, and a lot of conversation around the whole STEM programs, and also CTE, and all of the myriad opportunities there are for education in the trades and all that sort of thing. Do your counselors get an opportunity to go out to learn about all these various opportunities, and then kind of bring that information back?
Absolutely. So a lot of those opportunities come through VOSI, so anytime, you know, we are on my learning panel with VOSI, anytime something pertinent of that nature comes, I usually share with the department, and we discuss, you know, who can go to these conferences, and then they come back and present at a department meeting. We also, through VOSI Vocational Centers, we have meetings, I have a representative, one of my counselors goes to the VOSI meetings whenever they happen, they're not monthly, I think they're more bimonthly, mentoring conferences, the colleges and universities also sponsor many conferences, that at any time that I'm either on my list or in VOSI, I disseminate it with the whole department, and I ask that a representative goes to these conferences. There have been STEM conferences through SUNY Stony Grove that one of my counselors attended last year, so as long as I'm on top of, and they're on top of all the organizations that put out these conferences, we always try to work in concert with the school department and send a guidance, a vocational guidance person to them, absolutely.
How do you, how does the guidance office handle promoting or explaining the value of the academies, for instance, the academy program?
So it's very timely, that question, because last night, when we had our eighth-grade information night, we had Ms. Cadiz and Ms. Reese, who came and presented. Also, during the scheduling process, when we went down, we go down to the middle school, and we had our high school and beyond program, where the counselors went into classrooms and spoke with all of the eighth-grade students, and then that was followed up by visits by the academy, by Ms. Cadiz speaking to all the students about the academy. Then, when it's followed up, when the counselors meet individually with students and explore career paths, on the discussion of what academy pathway they might want to choose, and even if they don't want to be in the academy, let's say that they don't want to be, they might want to take an elective that will expose them, and then maybe later on choose that pathway. So there's multiple ways that students are informed about their academic and elective options, and career and graduation pathways.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just have another question. So your student guidance ratio, is it, how does it compare, like, to industry standard?
To, like, Nassau County?
Like, just, like, I guess what would be the ideal situation?
Okay, well, the ideal is always that we lower.
Of course.
I think that we're in line with Nassau County, if you look across the country, there are different parts of the country that are much higher, so right now, we're at about, I would say, the last time I walked, I want to say about two sixty per counselor, so I think that... So I think that we're in line with Nassau County. You know, I was just at a conference, a LICI conference at the Focus with Guidance and of course in different, different middle schools generally have higher caseloads, but I think that we're in line with Nassau County at this point. I'm confident that we are. Every once in a while, somebody in my group of Nassau County guidance directors does a survey and I'm always looking at numbers and, you know, I do think that we're in line.
I'm good, I think I'm good, yeah.
Okay. I had a question about, so the AP exams, just in terms of the total number of exams taken, is there any trend that you can identify? Are we kind of around the same amount of exams taken year to year?
It, it has increased as we adopt. I believe that with the Capstone program, we're going to increase. I have seen some variation between subject matter that, you know, I've discussed, but I think as we add classes, it continues to increase for the most part. You know, and a couple of years back, we went from, you know, an honors program from sub-subject, this was a while back, to AP. So in English, you know, it drops off in the 11th and 12th grade is AP, not honors. So I do see an upward trend and because the college board is coming up with new programs and we're looking into it, I think that that's going to continue to increase and I think that will be benefit to our students because they will be even more ready for college and careers.
And just along those lines, we have the percent of students scoring three, fours, and fives at 74.2%. What's the, the trend there, is that?
For Baldwin or?
Yeah, for Baldwin.
We are, we're on an upward trend with that as well for Massey.
Okay. And then it, there's this slide, you have the, you list all the exams we give and the number of, number of students, I guess, that have taken the exam.
Correct.
So we have physics C, electrical and mechanical, I guess, that there's one student taking that. How many students are in the class? I'm assuming that everybody takes the exam.
That's a test, so the class is combined because if you see the physics C, mechanical, physics C, electrical and mechanical, so that's a specialized test.
Okay.
And the physics program has morphed in the past couple of years. It used to be A and B and now it's, you know, changing. So that's like a more specialized exam.
You can also take the test without taking a class. So there's, we do have some students who just are self-motivated and excel and they'll sign up to take the test without actually sitting for the class.
And so is there a, a general threshold for the number of students that would have to be enrolled in order to, for, for a class to run, like an AP class? I'm thinking specifically like art history.
Well, that would be, I think that's more like a scheduling issue because, you know, of course we want all AP classes to run. We try to increase enrollment, but that's, you know, I think that when the schedule is done, all, everything's looked at as a whole and then those decisions are made. You know, we do our best to recruit for these classes and make sure that if there's an interest that we are advising students that they're being put in the right classes and our hope is that they do run. We don't, I don't, we have guidelines, we never have had like cutoffs for amounts of, you know, amount of students in class.
So, and sometimes the classes will be combined. And one of the other things that we're starting to look at is offering more classes, but on a even year, odd year schedule, if it works that way. That, that doubles, well, depending upon how many we do that way, the opportunities for kids. So I may have an opening in my schedule, you know, senior year, but I didn't have a junior year. Or I may have both years, but I have an opportunity to take different classes because some are often even year, odd year. But those are some of the alternatives that we're looking at so that we can maximize the opportunities for the kids. The other thing that the board should know and the community should know is that one of the things that we've increased over the last few years are dual, dual enrollment programs. So you can get college credit either by taking an AP class or doing a dual enrollment course. So some of the classes that we offer are dual enrolled with Malloy, let's say, or St. John's. There's a whole host of classes that, of universities that we work with. In both cases, the kids get the opportunity to experience what it's like to take a college level class. But there are different types of classes and there's different reasons to take one or the other. So you might see a fluctuation in AP classes, but that might be because there's more kids in dual enrolled classes.
Mr. Press, I'm sorry, I had one more question that popped in my mind as you guys were talking. In terms of students, like we, we do add new courses. How, how are students notified that these courses are being added? And like, what kind of marketing is taking place?
We have a very extensive articulation and scheduling initiative. So basically, now, it's actually very current because we just had a, we have an articulation program with the middle school where our counselors from the middle school and the high school meet with every single department supervisor, six through 12, and we discuss any new courses. And then that happens before scheduling takes place. So then the counselors are aware of any new course, courses that will be offered. So the eighth graders would find out during the presentations and then the high school kids, when they meet their counselors, will know about it. Plus, they get a course offering book and an elective sheet so they can visually see what is being offered. And that's how we're doing it. And our AP information, like every single department had a pamphlet with every course, every AP course that's being offered in addition to the elective. So, you know, we really get that information out.
Dr. Kemy, would we be able to get a, a copy or working copy of the courses that are offered at high school?
Yeah. I guess the other question I had, and I think in years past, we've gotten sort of that, the breakdown of the scores in each of the courses so that we can see how our kids are doing in calculus, maybe?
Courses or the test?
The test, I'm sorry, like the one to five scores. So I'd be curious to see that and sort of, again, I'm kind of interested in trends. Like are our kids doing better in, in some of the courses? And I guess the other question related to that.
Each student with their score that passed?
Like one, no, each grade, like from one, one to five?
Yeah. You mean like, or what, that state place, with each family, students got a one, two, three, four, or five?
Right.
I can get that.
Right, we used to, we used to get that. And then I guess this, maybe this is more question for you, Dr. Kemy. If we are identifying courses where our students are struggling, are we, I'm sure I know the answer to this, but are we identifying that and saying, okay, let's look at that and how can we improve that?
So the, so Baldwin?
If we can.
Yeah, so Baldwin's unique and I think in a good way because we have open enrollment.
Right.
So if you are a student at the high school and you want to attempt an AP course, we let you do that. And all the research behind that will, is supportive of that decision. So if I am a student who struggles, but I take an AP class, the benefits of sitting in that AP class and struggling in that AP class, even if I don't do well in the class outweighs not taking the course at all. So we can certainly look at the grades, but I would rather have a program where everyone has the opportunity to sit for those classes and maybe not pass the test, but have the experience of what it feels like to be in a college level course. We've had some students come back to the high school and they, they have all mentioned how prepared they were. And in fact, we've had a couple of people who've come back, most recently who came back and said, you know, high school was harder than their program, at least initially in college. You know, if you guys remember back when you went to college, you generally didn't take more than five classes. Sometimes you took four. Classes don't meet every day, so you might have, you know, class three days a week or four days a week and, you know, you weren't in school from eight in the morning until three in the afternoon. You know, a lot of times kids go off to college and they're like, wow, this is it, you know, I'm in a couple of hours a day. But what we find is that our kids are very well prepared to manage the work and the workload because they've had that experience in high school. So we, you know, we certainly share the data, but I would be cautious about the data because the numbers don't necessarily tell the full picture.
So just like with AP, oh, I'm really into that mic. So with respect to AP classes, do you guys find it difficult to get students to take the classes? I mean, or like, I mean, and kind of like, what are you doing to kind of encourage students?
Well, we always encourage all students to take the most demanding classes possible. And I don't think that we have a hard time because I think our students are, they take the initiative and they challenge themselves. If my counselor sees somebody that really should be in the AP class or maybe not reaching their potential, we will call the parent in and have discussions regarding this. You know, because we want all students to challenge themselves and take that extra step. And like Dr. Kemy mentioned, maybe before they, they might take a dual credit course and then take an AP course or they might start with an elective, an AP elective, not a core AP class, which is, you know, maybe a science elective that they, you know, are really interested in. But our goal and our initiative is to make sure that every student has the opportunity and does try it. But I don't think that we have trouble, you know, encouraging kids to do this. I agree with that.
Just one question, can you remind me, in terms of the Capstone diploma program, is there a criteria, can you explain how that works again? I know we talked about it a while ago, but just a quick synopsis on it.
Well, it's a new program and it's gonna, the two pivotal courses are AP Seminar and AP Research.
Right.
So we're going to start with basing in AP Seminar and that's going to be through the English department. And there's certain criteria that after they complete these two courses plus a number of other AP courses, they will actually come out with an AP Capstone diploma. And that's how the program, that program works. But it also teaches them deep thinking skills and, you know, the research is very intensive. So when they go to college, they will know how to do a research paper and they will be prepared. So it's a combination of being in those two pivotal classes plus other, you know, additional AP courses as well.
Is it those two classes that make it the Capstone? Or will there be other AP courses that allow it to be the Capstone?
So you, on tonight's agenda are, you have, on tonight's agenda, five classes to approve. Those are two of the classes to approve. So, so let's go back a couple of steps and talk about where this come from. There's a program out there called the International Bachelorate Program, IB Program. And there's a number of districts on Long Island who have that program. This AP Capstone is really college board's response to IB. So the, there's a couple of differences. There is the IB program and then there's the IB diploma. The courses that are offered in the IB diploma program are pretty varied and go, they're, they're very deep in nature. So they're, they're, they're not, you know, long shallow courses. They're, they're, there's some variety in there, but they go deep into the content. And at the culmination of each of those courses is an exam that is graded by an international panel of, of people. AP, college board came in and said, you know, they, they recognized they needed to compete with IB because I guess they were losing some of their schools to the International Bachelorate Program. So the, the two courses that you're being asked to approve tonight, as Dr. Boulder said, are AP Seminar and AP Research. Right now, AP Seminar is, the AP Capstone program is being offered by Ulet, Massapequa, Seaford, Valley Stream, Jericho, Malvern, and Plainview, Old Bethpage. And it consists of two courses. So AP Seminar, for us, will be in place of English II, which is sophomore English at the high school. As Dr. Boulder said, it encourages critical thinking, inquiry, problem solving. It requires an oral presentation and there is an AP exam at the end of the course. And then AP Research, which is the second course, is really students working on creating a thesis. The, they are rigorous programs and the way that college board has designed it is there's two ways you can be recognized. One is a certificate program and that's if you take and complete AP Seminar and AP Research, which is two years' worth of work, you get a AP Seminar and Research certificate. And the other is if you do those two and in addition to that, you do, you take four additional AP courses and there's a minimum grade that you have to get. And then you get a recognition of an AP Capstone diploma, which is the, meant to be the equivalent of the IB.
Is it though, I guess is my question, just based on what I know with the IB. As you said, it's more in depth and detail, whereas this one is talking more about two courses.
Programs are different. We are deeply embedded in AP. IB is an extraordinarily expensive program. The both programs have merit.
So this is a highly recognized program, the AP?
It's new.
That's the thing.
But colleges know the college board, they know and understand advanced placement and that is highly recognized. So this is in addition to the already existing AP program and, you know, what it does do is it adds a level of rigor that, that is, I think, college preparatory. So, you know, one of the things kids struggle the most when they go off to college is putting together a paper.
Right.
And not a paper where the teacher says, is looking at it along the way or says, you know, it needs to be three pages. You go off to college and, you know, they may say it's a 15-page paper and, you know, that, that can be a little daunting at times, you know, if you've never really written something like that. So this asks kids to not only read novels or literature, but it asks students to read multiple pieces of literature and to think critically across the pieces of literature. And it asks kids to write, but to start with a problem and come up with something they've written and a solution to that problem with a justification of that solution. So, you know, on the level of sophistication, it's pretty sophisticated. Mr. Mignello, can you just share what, when you went to Massapequa to see the program, what are some of the things that you saw and what was the feedback that you got?
So I had the opportunity to visit the program. There's about, I'd say, 12, 15 other school districts on Long Island that attended a information at BOSI's, about the AP Seminar and Capstone program. Massapequa invited several schools to go and see their site. When we visited the class, students were working in groups, it was pure student-centered collaboration. Students were, at that time, working on finding evidence, justify their stance on their particular topic that they chose to research. The students were able to explain to us how they know that there's very strict deadlines, they're going to gap the maximum amount of topics to research. Like the college board, every year will give a stack of like 100 independent research-based articles that they need to utilize as part of their defense throughout the course of the year. The students were noting how they are feeling more prepared for their AP world edition course that they're in because the skills are overlapping and the Capstone program is skill-based. So they're not reading the traditional text, like if you go to English II, you might read traditional textbook, that's what it might be, but they're not doing that. They're focused more on finding resources and doing research to defend their thesis. So they're reading a tremendous amount of material, they're researching, they're working with their peers. They have to present as a group, so they're all reliant upon one another. And they also have to present individually. Those presentations are filmed and uploaded and screened by a panel in the college board and graded. So there's multiple components to their test, such as the technical written test, they have to do as well, but they also have to go through various stages of world events, so the authentic assessment.
Can you also share what, what they mentioned about kids being prepared for the region system?
So what I was discussing with the director of curriculum, Massapequa, they did a test, they took those 10th grade students who completed the seminar class and administered the junior year Regents exam in the LA and they scored better, the students who were traditional AP junior class.
Okay.
That's because it's so focused on those skills that they need to interpret passages, to write. Um, so, their program has doubled in the past year because students are taking much more interest in it. Um, they, they note very rigorous, there are very firm deadlines. There are no exceptions to the deadlines. So, it's something that we need to clear to any student who's interested in taking the course.
Okay, thank you.
You started out with a question.
I know, I have so many more.
I know.
I'm holding back.
And I was interested in your question.
I de-reservated, yes, so forth.
Since it's part of the AP program, then I assume that the students that are encouraged to take these are students who would normally be moving into AP courses in any case.
So, we're gonna discuss that. We're gonna have a separate information night, just particularly for this course, since it is new. Inviting families of ninth graders who are going to tenth grade English so they have, they know their options a little more. They really need to know the brand of this course. Again, the deadlines are very strict and it's different than typical AP classes in terms of expectations and what skills they need. So, we're gonna devise another information night for parents, students who are going into tenth grade so they could, um, be well-informed and then select which their preferences.
The, the stakes are a little higher on this test because of where it's positioned and the level of rigor. Um, but one of the things that some of the districts are doing, which we're talking about, um, is considering if this, if the, the seminar class prepares the kids really well for the Regents exam, the English Regents exam, because they're, they're closely aligned, um, it's possible that we may have those kids take the English.